Why buy your next vehicle from Community Motors of Mason City?
Great service from three locations. Community on Monroe, Community Motors Westside, and Mason City Ford. Ten new franchises and hundreds of vehicles to give you more choices. Plus, Community offers an exclusive 3-3 warranty on pre-owned vehicles and 10-year, 250,000-mile warranty on new. Need more reasons why? Stop or visit communityautogroup.com.
Cause nobody beats a Community deal, nobody.
All right, well it's 7 o'clock. It's March 20th, 2012. It's the regular meeting of Mason City City Council. Just a few quick announcements. As usual, I want to mention the packet that we all have up here. You can find it at home if you go to masoncity.net, your government, and scroll down to Mayor and Council. You can find it says packets and you can pull the packet up that we all have right here along with any agendas or past packets that you would like to see. Another quick announcement, March 22nd, which is two days away. We've had an early spring here and we're going to get Mr. Trout, Dr. Stangler, and they're going to get, start picking up yard waste here. So feel free this weekend to, or anytime, really, to start sticking your bags out of the curb. Just a nice convenience for everybody here in town during the spring. And then, third, Blue Zones. We had everybody in here from the state on the 14th. This room, this chambers were absolutely packed. We had over 100 business leaders here in the community. We had the Blue Zone team in here. They were very impressed. Very well done. Our city staff did a great job. Angie Dieterman in particular deserves an enormous amount of credit. She had a lot of help from a lot of different folks all over the community. We actually turned in letters of commitment from our top 20 employers. Blue Zones asked for a top five. We turned in the top 20 here in town and there was a number of other letters of commitment from employers in there as well. And that was, as they had mentioned, a collective performance by Mason City. Just a quick note though, we slipped down to third place and on the scoreboard Cedar Falls is now in front of us just by a fraction, but they are in front of us. So any folks, if you haven't, if you haven't gone to www.bluelzonesproject.com and pledged commitment and looked through what we can do here in Mason City, please do it. It's very important. There's a lot of folks out there who they support it, they like it, and they're friends of all pledge and they say, "Oh yeah, you know, we'll do it." Go pledge. Now's the time to go and pledge. You can do it at bluzonsproject.com or text BZP 277-2937. And that scoring is going to be going all the way up to the very first of May, which is when they're going to make their selections. So very important for Mason City. We've put on a very good show so far. We've got a lot of support out there from the community, our businesses, et cetera. This council supports the effort, so please weigh in and put your participation in this to use and get done with it. We'll call the meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. Is there a motion, a second about the agenda?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carried. Well, we're going to start off this evening. We have Mr. Collins here from Alliant Energy and he's going to make a quick presentation alongside his partner here at Citizens. Mr. Collins.
I'm the mayor of the city council. Good evening, Mr. Collins. Greetings from Alliant Energy. I'm Jim Collins and this is one of the more fun things that I get to do is to get to talk about the projects that Alliant Energy has done and is going to do and in the near and the future. And in Mason City, they have a variety of things, but I'm going to point out some of the cool things that we did just last year. Energy efficiency, that's a big part of my job. Last year here in Mason City, we had over, well, about 4,000 rebates for a total of $1.7 million in projects that people did at their homes and their businesses and elsewhere. And that's about $3.6 million, that's a lot if you can put it that way. Some other things that we do here, as you saw it down there on 19th Street, but we spent $2.7 million on infrastructure upgrades, street wide needs, new poles, wires, transformers, and that sort of thing. And that's right here in Mason City. And for our natural gas, about a half million dollars. So we've been making quite an investment here and we're going to continue to do that. Some of the things that people may not know is that we do pay taxes and sometimes it's hard to see what are those taxes that we pay to Mason City? Well, I went back and I found out exactly, well, close, it's $663,000 last year in taxes to the city itself and then a $2 million if you include the entire Sarah Porter County. So as a, we continue to be a big supporter of Mason City and continue to be a partner. Now, some of the things I want you to be aware of is you're going to see us out of the center, closer working. We are going to buy Taco John's on 6th Street all the way back to Shaco. We're going to be redoing all of our infrastructure there, so new poles, wires, transformers. And it's also going to head north for a couple of blocks past the fire department. That project there is going to be about $600,000. And another thing that's not going to be quite so obvious is we're going to take the northeast quadrant of Mason City this year and we're going to do what we call life cycle extensions. And what that means is our crews go to each pole and wire and look at them, make sure they're well repaired as needed. What that does is extend the life of the system without having to replace the whole thing. So that project there, we're estimating to be about $300,000. So we're going to spend yet another million dollars this year on projects and that's about it. Is there any questions that I can answer?
Thank you, Mr. Collins. We appreciate the investment from Alliant Energy here in the community. Council, do a quick round if you have any questions or comments. Mr. Collins, Mr. Trump.
Has there been any progression on design for the new maintenance facility?
Actually, we have held. First thing we're going to do is buy the site. As far as the design, we pretty much have it. We have other buildings that we're going to like in our facility too. So it's the site selection that we're first doing. And what we've done is had a meeting here with me and Don Lawson and people from Cedar Rapids and we looked at the various, well, rent providers, some sites to look at. So we're looking at those to see which would be the best for us for getting our trucks in and out of and things like that. We have not made that selection. We expect that that selection is made in 2013 and we expect that our new facility should be, we're aiming right now for December 2016.
Be open?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay, Mr. Trump, is there somebody else?
Mr. Trump.
Do you want to have a question? I can only say one thing here. My energy audits that you've been providing and insulation of houses, I would, I'd advise myself personally, and I would highly suggest to anybody that lives in an older home or district or whatever to have one of your energy audits conducted. And I know the installation that was provided was pretty much paid for by Alliant Energy and the cost savings, it was tremendous and of course, the heat bills and so forth. So I would highly recommend your services to anybody out there.
Thank you. Big plug.
Mr. Trump, is there anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
For sure. All right, we'll move on to the public forum. Mayor and Council welcome. Comments from the public on agenda items only. And we want to ask you to give your name and address and the agenda item and number of topic you're referring to and we'll have five minutes box right up there in front of the podium. Mr. Hann.
Sanders, Savannah, 1213 Sixth Street Southwest here in Mason. I just have a question on number 17 where it talks about the floodplain management. The question I have is, I've read and I've heard things where you're talking about maybe looking at a civic center. Is that going to be in what they consider a floodplain? And my understanding is if it's a floodplain, can you build there and still have the insurance? Or like if it's considered a floodplain, I was under the understanding that you can't rebuild there. So that's my question.
Hey, Mr. Hann. We'll have Mr. Trout answer that when Mr. Hann is going to get the consent. Anybody else? We'll move to the consent agenda and I'll read this first. Number two, minutes, regular minutes of March 6th, 2012. Work session minutes of February 28th, 2012. Number three, claims dated March 8th and 15th, 2012. Number four, permits. Five, unaudited financial report. Six, mayor recommending approval. Reappointments, Isaiah Schatz at Cemetery Board, Heidi Mark Board to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Walter Schmidt at Building Advisory and Appeals Board. And then we're going to do a quick correction of term. Amp Jones planned to do the zoning board adjustment to expire in 2016, not 2017. Number seven, administrative recommending approval resolution letting assessment for charges on certain properties in the certification of same kind of treasure collection. Eight, administrative recommending approval resolution permit for Ralph's Garden Cafe. Five, South February Avenue, reuse of Golden Broadway, Federal Avenue Plaza, Riverside Cafe. Number nine, administrative recommending approval resolution approving publication notice appearing upon a consolidated application for federal transit. Administration assistance grant for non-urbanized areas in state operating assistance funds for transportation and authorizing submission of the application setting time and place of public hearing, prescribing form of notice to be given, direct clerk to cause publication of said notice. Number 10, administrative recommending approval flood 2008 resolution accepting warranty deed from property located 218 North Penske Avenue. Eleven, administrative recommending approval contracting bond for destruction of 2004 manhole replacement water chain remodel project 12-1001. Twelve, administrative recommending approval resolution authorizing notice to bidders fixing non-possessive security and ordering clerk to publish notice and fixing it date for exceeding same, improve public hearing on plan specification to formal contract and estimate of cost for construction of 2012 street panel and curb replacement program. Number thirteen, administrative recommending approval resolution award contracting aid for the association professional services, plan to repair at 12th Street Northwest over Old Ness Bridge. Fourteen, administrative recommending approval resolution fixing date for meeting of the proposal, tender into a development agreement, Charlotte Davidson of Mason City and Ron D. Minor, amplifying for publication notice thereof. Fifteen, administrative recommending approval resolution authorizing approval between the city of Mason City and the IDOT for development and planning, study for one-way streets in Cary, Iowa, 122, traffic within corporate limits of Mason City. Council, do you have any items you would like to vote?
Mr. Trump.
Fifteen. Anybody else down here? All right, Mr. Q. Thirteen. Fifty. Three. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of three, 13 and 15. Is there a motion?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there a motion, a second, or a call?
Renus?
Yes.
Kewen?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Torquess?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
All right, thank you, council. We'll move on to number three. Number three, exclaim date March 8th and 15th, 2012. Mr. Trump, do you have a motion?
Just point order. I'm going to abstain from this because I have a work associate that has a plane out here. So just for him's propriety or reasons, I just, I won't abstain from this.
Thank you. Is there a motion from the president of council?
Look to the room.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion on that besides extension? All right, clerk, call it over.
Silver?
Yes.
Kewen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Second.
Lee?
Yes.
Torquess?
Yes.
Renus?
Yes.
All right, thank you, council. Number 13, administrative recommending approval resolution award contracting aid for the association professional services related to repair, the 20th Street North Glass over Pass Bridge. Mr. Q, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Q, go ahead, please.
Just a quick question from our, I was asking when I was at City Hall today, but it came up after I left. Some contractors were asking me after I left, and we are awarding a professional service contract like this on the project when we're coming back, doing repairs and observations. In our scoring system for this, do we give any sort of premium or points towards the engineer who provided the service in the first place on that kind of project like this, or is it a level plane?
Excuse me. No, it's a level, it's a level plane. A level plane, you're down. We do, on a project like this, I did choose to, this was brought to council in 2011 and put it back out. In this case, dealing with a specialized engineering, structural engineering type project, I did go into a T and use their pre-approved list of engineers, solicited letters of interest from them and then from that, chose, chose to activate.
Yeah, I've just had some inquiries about the professional service contracts we awarded in some local firms and I had that question that day and I didn't have the answer, so I just told the person how that's at the meeting tonight. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Q. Is there one else? Mr. Vicki?
Yeah, Mr. Trump. I know when we talked yesterday, Yagi Colby was the original engineer out of the, is our?
No, that, WGS.
Oh, WGS. Okay.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Seeing those, further discussion, or call.
Kewen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Torquess?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Renus?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, council. Number 15, administrative recommending approval resolution authorizing approval of 2088 in the city of Mason City and the IDOT for the development of a planning study for one-way streets in Cary, Iowa, 122, traffic within corporate limits of Mason City, Iowa. Mr. Trump, do you have a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Second. All right, Mr. Trump.
Basically, I've moved approval because I don't want to argue against this, but I have a number of gaps in knowledge, specific will issue that I need filled before I'm comfortable understanding what we're doing and why. I thank you, Brent, for getting the meeting notes from the council work session on March 22nd of 2011 now to everybody. And that was helpful, but it also reaffirmed that my recollections of that meeting are pretty accurate. Basically, the last dialogue we had on Highway 122 and basically we're talking about from Carolina to Monroe for all intents and purposes, specifically where the Highway 122 is split in the one-way traffic. The last council discussions we had on this was basically the work session in March of last year. And as a council, we learned that the cost of the NEPA study had gone up significantly. And we also learned that before we could ever bring the two one-way streets back together, we would have to do a NEPA study and the cost had gone up significantly and had also pushed the timetable out to where the project would be completed until the 2017, 2018 timeframe. And not only had the cost of the study gone up, but we had even begun to talk about the cost of doing the project, which would extend into the millions, especially given that we would have to go through a process of property acquisitions to develop a corridor to run the highway back together. And this was one of the few things that the council agreed on unanimously. And to a person, we agreed that there was not enough value in the project to bring the two one-way streets back together. And we made a decision at that time, which is certainly open to be revisited if there's anybody that would so desire. But in March of last year, we made a decision that we were going to leave the configuration as it is. We, as a community, simply wanted the street repaid, replaced, whatever you want to call it. We also learned that if indeed we kept the current configuration, the meeting notes would reflect, we were under the understanding that a full NEPA study would not be needed. And I think that may be bringing in part of the confusion with what we're being asked to do tonight. I think we may have a problem with semantics. It would seem to me that throughout the documentation, we talk about studies, we talk about full NEPA studies, we talk about partial NEPA studies. And we, at least me, have been understanding those to be interchangeable and I don't think they are. And I think that the terminology not being in the business every day has created some confusion, certainly for me and I would gather from my colleagues. What I really need to understand is what is the purpose of the study that we're talking about? What's the desired outcome of the study? When do we expect the study to be complete? And based on those deliverables, when would we actually expect the project, the paving to be complete? And what is the ramification if the council doesn't support participating financially in the NEPA study? How might that impact those deliverables in the potential project?
Thank you. Mr. Trump, go ahead. The meeting will respond.
Yes, the NEPA study is required for us to move forward and as far as whether it's a full NEPA study, and I agree that is a bit of a confusion because that was mentioned during the work session about the need to do more in-depth study through the process. What we're looking at is a study that would actually begin rather quickly because the DOT is going to utilize a on-call consultant in order to do this, they're even talking about potentially having a public hearing reference to the project in May. That would continue to move, I think we'd be looking at probably over a year in order to complete the study if I remember my numbers right. And at the end of that, then you would have a couple of things they would review to make sure there are no environmental impacts because of the project. Also, as you review the information, the map, they show they have a couple of different configurations specifically for the curves that are over on the east end of the project. They're looking at two different reconfigurations and that would be part of the NEPA study is looking at which configuration has the least impact to the community and so forth. So that is to be looked at too. And then also a potential reconfiguration of the area that is just north of Federal and Highway 122. They look, they expand it and you can look at the map, it just moves just north where the two curves and where the roads come back together and where they, you know, where they separate or come back together depending on your direction. They would be analyzing that also. And then after all of that review, then we would then need to get into the programming for the DOT. Krista said today that's about $11 million project and of course, most of that would be funded by the DOT. We would have a small share of it and the more we put in, the faster we can move up on the list. But we really are looking at 2016 or 17 before the paving would begin if I, based on what she's told me. Because right now, it is not programmed at all in the five-year plan, so it's not in the current five-year plan. So the first year you're out, it'd be six years from now before we'll see construction. That answer most of your questions?
I have more, but.
Yeah, we'll come back when Alex go. Everybody down here.
Mr. Q. First, I appreciate the counsel and Trump's bringing this up for the three new council members. I remember this discussion back in March of 2011, I wasn't the council member then. So I appreciate the information brought forward on this. From what I understand, we have 8,000 budgeted for the study. We have until the May, December, before DOT's gonna have their public hearing.
Their shooting for May 17th.
Okay. And I've looked into this quite a bit since the fact this come out and I feel pretty comfortable moving forward, but if other members have concerns and want to push this to a council work session next week, I would have no problem with that being better safe than sorry. If there's some ideas that might come up between now and then that might not come in front of us right now, I don't think there's anything pressing where we couldn't do that. At the same time, I'd be okay moving forward. At the same time, I'd like to hear some other thoughts from the candidates on this.
All right, go ahead.
As far as postponement, I did talk to Krista and she's the minor at the DOT, agrees district to DOT. And Krista said that we could move this back, two weeks would not cause an issue relative to starting the study. So it could be moved back and she said that she had a meeting in Ames that day, but we'd be able to make it back by around 7:00 in order to be able to meet with us on next Tuesday and go through this particular item, answer questions and bring it forward. They completed their planning study, which reviewed all of the safety issues and concerns relative to the corridor. They've got a lot of suggestions that I think are excellent suggestions that will reduce the number of vehicle accidents that we're having. And they've worked with all of those issues on their own as part of their own process. And now, that's why then now we're ready for the NEPA study. The NEPA study looks at different issues relative to the project, not just safety.
Thank you. Mr. Q. Anybody else, Ms. Silver?
Back to the $80,000 that was budgeted, was that, was that included in this year's budget or that was in last year's?
Last year's budget, correct. Your memory is correct. It was in last year's budget. And so it's set aside for us to use. We still have it set aside as a carryover, as a capital project carryover.
Okay, and then you commented just a little bit ago that $11 million project mostly funded by the DOT. Do you have any idea of what?
Well, the standard for assisting on a project is typically around 20%. Maybe a DOT project that after March, roughly more or less, 20% local contribution towards the project. Now, we have funds that were given by the federal government every year and they're called STP funds, they're given to us. We have been holding back some funds in that, in that account for this project. With how, exactly how much we need, we haven't got to that point. And we also, I was even having a discussion with the finance officer about our road use tax funds and where we're going there, that we may need to be setting aside some road use tax funds over the next few years to help with our share of this expense also. So it is something that we're starting to have discussions with staff about how we hold back some money so it won't be the bond for this type of project. There's a lot of road use tax funds at two different costs that we can utilize for our share of this expense.
With them doing this NEPA study and we keep talking about acquiring properties, if this wants to be done, if any of these citizens come to City Hall and want to do like a large modeling project or put up a garage or whatever, are we going to kind of tell them that they're...
Yes, I actually, the map you have has an area. It shows a little bit of where that would run and who would be affected by it. I would need to get the other map that I know they showed me when they looked at this design that would show better where it would be. One impacts, I believe, two homes, maybe three. The other one impacts seven or eight homes. And that's why we would have a public hearing is to allow citizens to come and look at the map and answer questions, have their questions answered regarding where this layout would go and what the impact would be. And the good thing news is that it is five, six years out, so we can tell them what's expected, what they're looking at. They would have a lot of notice before we would get an acquisition project.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Silver. Anybody else? Mr. Trump, please.
But basically, what you're asking for us now is just to go ahead with the study. It has nothing to do with moving on further with any kind of implication of what the DOT would do as far as changing.
Yes, and what will happen as we bylocate the study will hold a dialogue as to what types of changes would occur with the DOT, start discussing that with them. And that's what they're going to be seeking is that dialogue input from us regarding these changes that would occur.
And you're not asking for the 20, you're just asking for 20.
Right, 20, which was a reduction from what we had before. We had set aside 80 and that was because that was what we were told by the DOT, we need to have our contribution to the NEPA study. And then the cost was reduced because initially I think it was over $400,000, the first number we received. And then when we had our work session, it was almost a little over $800,000. And that's when things started changing as to what we were looking at, especially with the acquisition, I agree, of a long hat road, that would have been extremely expensive.
Okay.
Anybody else? Mr. Trump.
I'm kind of in the same boat, I think, with Council Q. I kind of feel comfortable with moving on with $20,000. I guess my personal opinion is I'd like to postpone this and get a work session so we get more, I'd like going through those notes, which wasn't two pages, it was a little longer. Trying to skip through those again, I'd like to get a better feel for it. I guess so, my mind movement or whatever, I would like to kind of workshop on this before I move in forward there with the study.
I appreciate that and actually, as I said, that's pretty much my reflection. I had a chance to visit with Mr. Trump this week, but I would not have been in that room with the other council and I think there's a lot there that we don't, I think we know a lot of it, but it would be good, you know, we've got three new colleagues and it'd be good to get it, make sure everyone's on the same page. So I don't know if anybody, if you want to go to response or if anybody would like to entertain a motion, postpone, have a workshop. Mr. Trump, this is your responsibility.
Well, I don't, I don't have a problem approving this tonight, but neither do I. I don't have a problem approving this tonight, but neither do I have a problem postponing this to work session because even as I sit here, I still have questions. I would just hope maybe we could have a little more discussion before we move to postpone and shut the discussion down because there's, we're here.
Sure.
Maybe we'll ask questions that the community will hear and we'll get some more feedback even before we meet again next week.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm gathering we are going to be having a work session next Tuesday. And will one of the agenda items be the Washington and Delaware?
Yes, it can.
Okay. Which is a request my colleagues probably don't know about, but that's a request, that's an agenda item that I'd request would be on the worksite next week, which is germane because if you look at this map in front of you, Delaware's not included. And if we're going to start talking about Washington and Delaware, we need Delaware to be part of this. We've only got Washington and Federal now. The way we do with Federal at 122 may change depending on what long-term we want to do. Did I say that right? What we do with Federal may change based on what we want to do with Delaware. But I don't want to use up my time talking about that. We'll flush that out at the work session. I'm really interested in this May 17th public hearing. We've had a lot of public hearings lately. And, you know, sometimes you're banned if you do, banned if you don't. On one hand, people want a public hearing early in the process so they don't feel like the project's getting shoved down their throat. But yet, if you don't have all the answers, you get raked over the coals because you're having a public hearing and you can't answer all the questions. On May 17th, I'm hearing that the purpose is going to be to introduce the project.
Yeah, by the DOT.
But the DOT already has kind of a, they kind of understand where the boundaries are in the playing field. And so the intent would be to let us know where the boundaries are and to seek community input on where exactly we play within that field. Okay. We've got, when you sent us the meeting notes from last March, you pointed out that the only significant change that the DOT is talking about is the radius about roughly a block west of Carolina. It looks to me like we might have one or two options here. I could see how these would create some community dialogue. And so I think it's important that people understand, here's a couple of suggestions and maybe part of the public hearing process is somebody, a citizen comes up with an idea we haven't considered yet.
Well, there were, sorry, there were three other, I think there were two other ideas considered and discarded by state and DOT.
My hope would be that when DOT has a public hearing, we can set it up to where we're very early in the process and we're seeking community input on tentative ideas to help us drive towards a potential solution and nothing set in stone. Is, am I properly understanding the process?
I think so. I think that they've identified things that will be helpful for safety and that are going to aim in certain directions, Mr. Trump has had.
Okay. Then the last plug on May is if indeed we table this tonight or postpone it, which I don't think is a bad idea. I don't think we can have too much dialogue on this. And if it's not going to hurt the scheduling of the project, why not? I would encourage citizens that have thoughts on Washington and Delaware, especially as they may or may not pertain to Highway 122 and those intersections, to come. If you don't participate in the work session next week, at least come listen in so that if you want to quietly behind the scenes, you can give us your thoughts. Because these are going to be some pretty significant decisions that we make in the next quarter, certainly sometime this year, that are going to impact the community for decades.
Quite so. So... Yeah, you know, mine makes some sense too, is maybe we would have a man let him do a special presentation that makes them give them the opportunity to make special presentations so they have the chance to see that there's going to be a public hearing coming up. Because you are, you're right, it's darn if you do, darn if you don't.
I have no issue with the $20,000. And that's just a very small piece of the whole thing. My primary concern is making sure we get it right.
And does anybody else have anything on response here? Ms. Keen?
That just made me think of one comment. This was before this was on the agenda. As you're heading east on six southeast, as you hear northeast, I hope I'm not losing you guys here, but that, where it curves, I've had a number of, not enough, two citizens call about the safety on that stretch. And just getting that out to the public to hear their ideas at a public hearing, I think, is a good idea. Because I've had a couple of calls. One was from someone who's lived near that corner for a number of years and they probably have, they will have a better idea of safety concerns than I would, living in that area of town. So I think that's a good point by Councilman Trump was to make sure the process is well known by the citizens if you have those public hearings. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Katie? Anybody else? All right. Mr. Lee?
I just wanted to, do we need a moment to postpone? I agree, you don't have a problem with $20,000, but I'm just too more comfortable sitting down. So I'll postpone.
Yeah, let's get to next week. All right. Well, how do we entertain the motion to postpone until April 3rd, the condition we're going to have a workshop here on next Tuesday? Do we have a motion to postpone?
A motion to postpone.
I'll second that.
All right. Is there any discussion on this? Anyone wants to have a chance to say anything further before we get the workshop? All right. With that motion, a second, seeing the discussion, we'll call a roll of the motion postpone.
Lee?
Yes.
Marinas?
Yes.
Keon?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, counsel. I think that's a very prudent move here on a very important issue. Number 16 is a public hearing. Minister recommending approval resolution adopting plan specification form contract estimated cost for construction of 2012 pavement market program, number 12-1005, be fit tag relation C resolution award contract for quality tracking, E PBA, community success, D B L M, under Boyne, Iowa, for construction of 2012 pavement market program, that number 12-1005. And we'll open the public hearing here. If anybody has any comments on this item, they're more than welcome to come to the podium, state your name and address, and the coffee that's brought to the podium. Here, seeing any movement in the room, if anyone wants? All right. We'll close the public hearing. Before we take a motion, Brent, Mr. Trout would like to make a comment inside of the room.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that I started looking at was we had a discussion about the potential of could we do this artwork, this work ourselves? And one of the things I looked at was I hadn't been able to recently relative to the cost of equipment. What I looked at was if there is a piece of equipment that could be purchased for the city, it's a skid mounted unit that fits in the back of a pickup truck. And the cost of that unit is $40,000 to $55,000 to purchase. Obviously, when we look at that, that's one cost and one element, but there are many others that relate to this. And you have cost of labor, dollars to the project in order to complete it, which the city hasn't done this for 16 years. And the city engineer and operating maintenance manager have information that I want them to present also relative to this. But it also, the biggest concerns that I have when we look at us doing it in-house with a liability related to this project, this is one of those ones where it's an effort every year that they typically paint a car. And we end up having the liability expense related to that. If it's done by someone else, that is no longer our possibility. Also, the places that do this work for us, their ability to purchase paint is much easier. I mean, they can get a rate on purchasing a paint that's much better than we would ever be able to do within our work if we do. And I think that causes the cost of this project to go up significantly. Obviously, with the use of paint, you also have concerns about spills and trying to deal with that with EPA and some of the concerns that I have there. That then is left up to people to do it right early and know how to handle that. That's, I think, an important part for us. And obviously, traffic control and the amount of effort that it takes on our part that we have to do, it isn't just the two guys that are, say, painting this work. It is the involvement that is required, much, much other work relative to traffic control and some of those other issues. So I think those are some of the initial things. When I look back at my career, I've seen, in both in Eagle Grove, we really did a hybrid system. We did, somebody came in and painted the long lines, the center lines, the sidelines, that type of thing. And then we hired staff, or then our own city staff, painted the arrows, the crosswalks, the stop locations. And so I've seen it in a combination in my past. And really, at this point, I look at what we're doing here, giving the cost of the coverage, the speed that they can accomplish it, first we can accomplish it there in and out in a shorter period of time. I still feel that this is the best solution for the community.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Trout. Anybody have a motion?
Motion approved.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Lee? Mr. Vicki?
Mr. Seigler, I got a few questions I'd like to ask you. Well, some were answered by Administrator Trout, but as far as if we look at possibly bringing this back and doing it in-house, there's 53 miles worth of pavement markets that we're looking to do in the city. And the directional arrows, do you see where it would be feasible? Can you give me your thoughts on what that would entail?
With the current level of staffing we have, I'm not likely, we need some additional staffing. And the staffing can't just be people off of the street. They have to be people that understand work zone safety. Or your other option is that we have to pull off what we normally do and give somewhere else. It'd be a give and take operation. That's an awful lot of miles of streets for us to do. In the past, what we've done is, you know, crosswalks. We've got some stuck in parking lots. We've done some low parking areas. We've done some railroad stuff. And that was pretty much a full-time job for two to three people because we were doing it from seven in the morning until 3:30 in the afternoon. People that we normally are hiring, that Mark is hiring, they normally come in and do a lot of work at night. When we do it during the day, we deal with a lot of issues with traffic congestion. And it's just cleaner and easier to have them come in and do it when the traveling public is not bothered whether you're going to work or coming home to work.
And I know you've been with the city for 38 years. That's a long time. I know talking to you today, you said you've done pretty much everything, kept painting the lines of your programs. But as far as safety issues and stuff like that, would there have to be like flagmen or anything like that if you were painting directional arrows and things like that? Also, that would make the cost of that.
That would depend on the areas that we're in. Obviously, if we're going to paint long lines on the tap-down, hopefully, we have to have a buffer truck like the DOT would use or a flagman to send the traffic around or run through the work zone properly. You know, every street would probably not require some kind of traffic control, but we are going to caution if we do it on the side of safety because, as you are all aware, you know, a few years ago, DOT people were working out on Interstate 35 and somebody ran into the back of one of their trucks. I'm on the cautioning side of protecting my people.
And if, say, somebody uses it again, versus, say, I've seen out there a two and a half gallon sprayer that we walk by and flush, that would probably be a major safety issue concerning to identify.
Well, basically, you'd be filling it up all the time. You'd be starting and stopping all the time. You do something that's in a cost-effective manner, you're going to have to have something that has some volume of paint into it. So that when you're in the traffic flow, you're not continuing to be stopping and starting, running from one side of the street to the other to fill the machine up. I mean, every time you, working in the streets as much as I have, a sewer job was last summer, even though you were reflecting that you similarly practiced work on the safety, you were always somewhat in harm's way because whether people are texting, talking on their cell phone, changing their radio, dropping something in their car, you know, it's kind of an unknown.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Akey. Anybody else on here? Mr. Lee?
It's been interesting. Learning experience in the last week or so on this seems to be kind of a simple answer. But I liked what Mr. Trout said about kind of a hybrid. You know, this has been due to me, it's been going on for 16 years. Everybody before us has passed this on and continued to do it. I have respect, you know, people bring up questions. And I, myself, would pass this. I think down the road, we have some painting that needs to be done pretty immediately for safety reasons. But in the next 12 months before we do this again, I'd like to see, you know, the study that said, well, this is cheaper. I'd like to see the hybrid. Are there some people who could do in-house, you know, before Bill gets out of here retired and, you know, get his expertise and say, what could we do in-house without jeopardizing other, you know, projects? Is there a way to do this cheaper? But I do believe that the majority of it does probably have to go outside. And we put a bid in so if somebody sees an opportunity here for a moneymaker, get bombed it. I believe they need to be bombed it. And you have 12 months to move on to doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Ms. Silver? Yep?
I would just like some clarification on what Administrator Trout was saying in regards to paint getting on the cars. Are we liable for that?
No. The contractor would be liable for it actually. The contractor would have the responsibility of taking care of the person that got paint on their car because they were wanting to affect the action.
I saw a couple of claims last year in which we paid out for that. So it drives me with a little curiosity because one happened to be my coworker and I happened to see her name on the claim sheet, like $100 because it was stopped out. So I'm trying to figure out why we paid her that. Did the insurance send a bill to the striping company then?
I'll follow up, but I don't believe that, I mean, Monroe Avenue project, we had an issue with painting. We forwarded that, I believe, to the contractor to pay. So I'll follow up.
I'll hear that need to you. And then when we approved this this evening, when does the marketing program start? I mean, is it going to be soon? April 1st?
Sitting here, Mark Ram. If you were contracted, I'll bring forward on April 3rd, the approval of the contract and bond and insurance certificate. And April 3rd, depending on the weather, I can be able to start September 3rd, we can April 1st. We back this up every year. We give them, I think the completion date is June 15th on this basis.
So we give them a couple of months to get that postponed?
Yeah, we give them about eight to 10 weeks to get it done, depending on rain days and things like that, humidity. Their contractor is basically driven by that too, or directed by weather and those types of things.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Thank you, Ms. Ram. Anybody else on the side? Mr. Keon?
Just real quick. The discussion's gotten a little towards local labor. I think in my two and a half months of the council, I think it's pretty clear I'll be supporting the local labor force as much as I possibly can. The fact of the matter is, we're talking about awarding contracts. And our only other option is to say, no, we can't quality striping for whatever reason in order to hide the claims at $6,000 or more or so. Move through.
Thank you, Ms. Keon. Anybody else? All right. Well, seeing that we've got a motion on resolutions A and C and acceptable tag relation, seeing for the discussion, they're called.
Vicki?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Keon?
Yes.
Marinas?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Very good discussion. Thank you very much, Mr. Trout, Mr. Ram, and Mr. Seigler for making assistance. Number 17, Minister recommending approval ordinance made in City Code, passed by, by our bill in Chapter 18, floating in my management in its entirety and adopting in Chapter 18. And this will be on second. Mr. Trout, do you have any quick opening comments?
We've received no other additional comments from anyone after this. We did have some individuals stop by to take a look at the maps on the wall and figure out whether they were in the area or out of the area. And haven't really received any other comments. I think this, you know, we have had a few that have stopped by and you can answer their questions.
Mr. Van has ever mentioned a quick question.
Right. Right, as far as, I think I need to have Trish come up to explain better, I think you have, we've had some discussions about that possibility of happening, which is a very quick.
Thank you. It's my understanding that no location has been finalized for a civic center, but at least one of the locations that's been talked about is, would be located in a medium risk floodplain area, when the maps become effective on May 16. That's the area that's commonly called, commonly but very incorrect, called a 500-year floodplain. It's an area where there's a 0.2% chance of risk of flood in any given year. The city regulates, with the exception of the two areas that are proposed for deregulation in Mason City, the city would regulate development in that area regardless of what the type of facility was, so we require that it be elevated or floodproofed. It's also my understanding that the Department of Natural Resources does have a statutory authority to review and require permit for development in the 500-year floodplain. And when we had our community assistance visit back in, I don't know, December, December of last year, they did indicate that if the city did receive a civic center in an area that was mounted on a 500-year floodplain, they would likely require a permit. However, because of the way we regulate our 500-year floodplain, and the fact that we locally require additional elevation above and beyond what the DNR requires, if it meets our local requirements, it will most certainly meet the DNR's requirements. We don't, we do allow development in the floodplain, it has to meet our standards, and we do not have any local regulations pertaining to the purchase of flood insurance. Generally, flood insurance is required by lenders. If the city does have any structures in the floodplain, then this will apply to our water plant, several of the latest operations and maintenance has out of the Old Decker Plant site, and there is a flood and the buildings are damaged, the city is liable for the damage that, for repairing the cost of damages equal to the amount of flood insurance you would expect us to purchase. So we did have a couple of buildings that we didn't get any payment for after the flood in 2008, because we had previously gotten fee of assistance, and it was conditioned on us purchasing flood insurance. We didn't do that, so we didn't get that payment, so. But we don't have any, other than any restrictions the community may put on city properties, we're not having requirements to purchase flood insurance.
Thank you, Ms. Sandell. Appreciate that very much. All right, let's get a motion a second here on number 17.
Move approval on second reading.
Is there a second?
Just, I want to follow up on what Trish said. Yeah, no, no, you don't need to. That was a good question, and I once worked for a Fortune 500 company where we built an entire facility, probably about 125, 140% the size of the capital center town, in a floodplain, and the entire footprint of the building was raised about three feet to get up out of the Mississippi Delta. So it is possible, but what we have to watch, and one point Trish didn't touch on, and this is why I wanted to, is though we may well be able to build in a floodplain and to protect that structure from flood damage, indeed what you do, say for the sake of discussion, we're talking about a three or four foot building pad, is you take area out of, you take surge out of play, and for a fixed volume of water, if it can't be stored at that location because there's now a building sitting there on a three or four foot pad, you've changed, you've changed everything else that happens downstream. So if indeed we ever did, first of all, we haven't decided we're going to build a civic center. Second of all, we haven't decided where it's going to be. But if we ever went down that path to a point that a civic center did look imminent in a floodplain in Mason City, as a councilperson, I would demand that we study the impact downstream from that point, so we would understand what we're doing to everybody else downstream. That would be the only fair and reasonable way for us to ever consider, putting a building in a floodplain. That's not germane to what we're talking about tonight, but that was a good question from the podium, and so I just wanted to follow up on that a little bit and let the community know where I'm coming from on that. But relative to what we're doing tonight, staff has done a great job in working with FEMA and taking care of issues, and working with the community and listening to concerns from the citizens and working to address those concerns. And this is a composite of about a year and a half to two years' worth of work, and I may be on the light end in that estimate, of some very hard work that staff has done, and it's a good change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charnquist. Anybody else? Just a second. Ms. Silver?
I just would like to ask Trish a quick question. Are they going to, right now, there's a maximum amount that you can get on buildings. Is that going to change, or is that going to remain at the $250,000? Do you know?
It's my understanding that it's going to stay at the $250,000 mark, simply because the national flood insurance program is not sustainable. The premiums that are paid in the program do not cover the losses that have been paid out, and every time there's a disaster, people are forced to buy flood insurance, the numbers of policies go up, which is a good thing, but overall, for that, FIPIT is a bigger than a bigger liability. So at this point, I don't think they're going to do it. It hasn't been raised in the same 15 years. It's been a gap for a very long time, and that was part of the congressional discussion, we had to reauthorize it.
I just wanted to make everyone aware that there is a limit on that, if we ever do pursue a momentary setting that like the issue as well in a certain area, but I also want to bring another point home that Trish said. If you've ever gotten a claim money from FEMA in the past, and you have not purchased flood insurance, if anything comes along again, you will get no compensation for it. You have to purchase the flood insurance to get any future reimbursement. So, want to make that perfectly clear to everyone, because if you did collect in 2008, you need to take a look at something now, so.
We did have one household that came back and bid, they got assistance in 2004, did not buy flood insurance, and they got no assistance from FEMA, and they couldn't get an SBA loan either, and so the kind of help that they had was actually saved by fire a few years later, so.
Very, very important. Thank you.
And the date, the date on that, Sandell, was May 16, the date of the month being time, is that right?
Well, actually, if you're in an area that is not currently mapped to the floodplain, and the boundaries change to bring you in, that 30-day waiting period doesn't apply, and actually, your policy would go under right away. But if you're currently in a mapped floodplain, and the boundaries are changing around you, you've got a 30-day waiting period for your policy to become active.
So it was May 16?
Yes.
That date was 16, so. Thank you, folks. Anybody else on the side? All right, seeing none, we have a motion a second on, a motion a second on the second reading. Quick call roll?
Charnquist?
Yes.
Qian?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Marinas?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, council. Seeing no other items on the agenda, we will adjourn. There'll be a public input, listening votes here in five minutes.